...the Subcommittee on Audit as well as the Subcommittee on Investments to Order. We're going to take things a little bit out of order today. First item of business is going to be the information item on the 2012 to 2016 Master Plan for the University. Vice Chancellor Alexa Loeb needs to be at two meetings at once, so we're going to give her an opportunity to go first. Alexa?
Okay. I think Matt's going to...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone.
No, the other Matt. The important...
No, no, no.
Doing very well, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sure. And Shiller, thank you for letting us go out of order here. Part of the reason we want to do the information items first is because we want to talk about the master plan. And the master plan is going to be presented in a few minutes, very few, at the Committee on Academic Affairs next door at 5:15. And we want to make sure that Executive Vice Chancellor Loeb will see for this master plan discussion. So, in front of you, you have a presentation on the master plan, so we'll go through this. We'll look through the presentation, and then we'll take any questions or concerns about the plan. So, if we go to the second page of the presentation, you'll see that we are... From New York State Education Law, CUNY has required every four years to submit a master plan to the Board of Regents. And so, the last plan, which was approved by the CUNY Board of Trustees and by the Board of Regents in 2008, is now expiring, and so we're getting ready to submit a new master plan. And the new plan, as I said just a minute ago, will be submitted to CAPRA this evening, and then to the full board at the June 25 meeting. Once the plan is approved by the Board of Trustees, it'll then be submitted up to Albany to the Board of Regents. Okay, and on page three, this master plan that we put together for the next four years, it builds on the progress that we've achieved through the last two plans that we've submitted. And the master plan is delineated by the university's four major missions. Mission one being academic excellence. Mission two being maintaining an integrated system and facilitating articulation. Mission three, expanding access. And mission four, remaining responsive to the urban setting. So, I just want to take a minute to talk about each of those missions and what's encapsulated in each of them. And so, on page four, academic excellence, the primary component of this is focusing on full-time faculty and increasing our full-time faculty rates. Because as you all know, although we, our colleges have done a tremendous job in increasing full-time faculty over the last 10 years, we haven't been able to keep up with enrollment. So, that's the primary focus there. We're also, are dedicated to the ongoing mission of the decade of science, which runs through 2015, the growth and enhancement of academic programs, enhancing our library systems, and expanding the use of academic technology. Okay, page five describes mission two, which is maintaining an integrated system and facilitating articulation. And these are those initiatives that help students acclimate to college life and promote success. The implementation of the Pathways Initiative is incorporated within this mission, and is a big part of this mission. But other programs include academic advising, career advising, counseling, and athletics as well. Okay, mission three, expanding access. And again, this is providing access to a quality education to all of our students and to the population here in the city. And key areas include college readiness, services for students with disabilities, veteran services, and some of our centers and institutes and initiatives like the blackmail initiative. So, a key part of this mission are all the collaborative programs that we have with the New York City Department of Education. And the last mission is remaining responsive to the urban setting. This covers all of those terrific things that we do at the university that wouldn't necessarily be part of what one would look at a university's mission of being, but all those terrific things that we do to promote social agenda within New York City. And so, things here are workforce and economic development, important work that all of our campuses do, educated community teachers, expanding healthcare education, and the sustainability efforts that we've been undertaking for the last several years at the university. Now, also in front of you is a one-page spreadsheet that's titled "Master Plan Detail: Financial Plan." Because what's going to be included in the financial plan for this submission, it's the first time that we've done this, in a financial plan, is we have costed out what each of the categories within the four missions, what we're projecting it'll cost us. And again, these are aspirational costs, meaning that, you know, if we had all the funding available to us, what would we spend on each of these categories? So, you can see for each of those missions, the breakout of the subcategories within these missions, and for the next five years, starting with next fiscal year, how much it would cost us, in millions of dollars. And so, for full-time faculty, the first item there, we would like to spend up to $191 million in fiscal year 2017, once we're fully ramped up. And again, this is aspirational, of course. It'll be reliant on how much funding we receive from the state and city. But the fact that we are entering an era, and we are in an era, of a fiscal stability with our maintenance of effort on the state and city side, with the four years of tuition increases that our Board of Trustees have already approved, we feel confident that we'll be able to fund quite a significant chunk of this. And it also leads into us being able to do real multi-year financial planning. So, now we have a master plan document, which is the guidepost and provides us with the plan, and we have some certainty as to what our resources are going to be with the tuition increases and the stability in state and city funding. And so, we're not going to go through each of these categories, but we wanted you, as the fiscal committee, to be aware of what was happening with the master plan, what some of the projected costs are. And also, you see on that one-page sheet, the new positions down at the bottom that we are planning to bring in, mostly through faculty hires, to try to bring us back to where we need to be compared to what our enrollment is. So, again, we wanted you to be aware of this. The CAPRA committee will vote on the master plan today, but we wanted to make sure that we went through with you and were able to give you an opportunity to have any questions or concerns while Executive Vice Chancellor Loeb is here.
All right, and maybe I should just add that there was a very lengthy consultation process that's gone on and revision. You have also in front of you a document that outlines what's been done in the past year for that purpose. Yep?
Probably more appropriate for the other committee, but I'd love to see the college preparation and the developmental education strategies as we address, you know. I'm ecstatic and happy about the demand perceived and occurring because of the wonderful quality that you're offering, by having worked at the New York City Public Schools and observed the quality of the students who are coming out of that or the lack of quality of the students that are coming out there. You know, the continuation of that conversation as to whom on first and who should be providing that service of college readiness is the conversation I know you and I have had, but I'd love to see what your plan's probably going to be.
Right. Well, there is discussion of all of these matters in the master plan, and it is an evolving process. We are working with the New York City Department of Education to directly intervene with students while they're in high school. We're doing a pilot program this summer for students who are not ready for college to get them ready. We're also going to be further testing and expanding some programs that we have that are extremely successful at getting students who've already graduated high school but are not college-ready to be college-ready. And so, we're doing all of those things. And then there are some discussions, I believe, going on at other levels about who's really responsible here and how. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Yes, I would like to suggest or request a minor alteration in language on the consultation process page. At the bottom of the paragraph, about October and January 11 to 12, the implication is that the UFS chair rejected this meeting. There was a vote of the executive committee...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Rejected what?
Rejected an invitation to have Stephanie Benjamin come and speak. There was a vote of the executive committee simply to revise a document and send it in, and there was no point in wasting everybody's time. So, the implication, as is written here, I would like edited, to include the fact that the executive committee's decision was what was carried out.
Sure. I mean, we can make it clear that the executive committee was not interested in meeting with Stephanie Benjamin.
Which is...
But the reason I gave... I have the email right here that gives the reason, back from November 13, 2011. And that's what it says.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Move into regular stuff? Okay. First item of business is approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 2, 2012. I'll move it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, changes, edits? They're being done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have three policy items on the calendar today. I'll read the some of, not all. The first one is that the Board of Trustees of the City University will authorize the university to choose a beverage manufacturer... You might have to recuse yourself. ...to be exclusive provider of soft drinks, teas, waters, juices, and certain other beverages to the university, i.e. pouring rights, in exchange for the payment of royalties and other valuable consideration to the university and the college-related entities. That the university's options such beverage manufacturer also may be granted the right to operate beverage vending machines at some or all of the colleges and at the central office in exchange for a commission on sales. The term of the contract resulting in the solicitation process shall either be five or 10 years without renewals, as determined in the best interest of the university. The contract may be executed by the university and/or any of the college auxiliary enterprise corporations, and shall be subject to approval as deformed by the university office of general counsel. I will move it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have... Anybody want to give a brief description of the centralization of this?
I could do it. Everything we've done, such as buying, anything we've done such as buying PCs, we went to the market and said, "If you could have the whole university, would you give us a better price?" In every case, they have. The idea here is go to the market, see if somebody's interested in getting pouring rates for the whole university. If they are, and it brings overall more money to the university, we'll do it. If it turns out it doesn't, we won't do it. It's as simple as that.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or who carries? Second item is a resolution that the Board of Trustees of the university authorize the general counsel to execute contracts on behalf of the university to purchase cleaning, maintenance, and paper products. Purchases will be made pursuant to law and university regulations through the most appropriate procurement method for each product in either form. One, a preferred source without competitive bid through the New York State Finance Law Section 162. Two, the lowest responsible and responsible bidder under existing State of New York Office of General Services contracts. And three, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding by the university. Or four, the responsive and responsible offering offer an invest value after public advertisement for the request for proposals. The contract shall be available by the use of all constituent colleges, and the estimated annual cost shall not exceed $6 million annually. The contract shall be for five years, from January 2013 through December 2017, and the contract shall be subject to approval by the general counsel. I'll move this motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, there's a resolution for the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to authorize the discontinuation of the university's accelerated study fee. I'll move that motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any explanation of this? Matt, do you want to...
Sure. Currently, there is a fee that's charged to students who take more than 18 credits, and the fee ratchets up the more credits over 18 students take. We've looked at this, and we've had consultation with council of presidents, with folks on our campuses and in the central administration, and we've had pretty much unanimous consensus that it's time to eliminate this fee. The main reason is that the decision on whether students are able to take more than 18 credits is really, and should be, an academic decision, and it shouldn't be a financial penalty that determines whether a student takes more than 18. And so, what we're going to be encouraging our colleges to do and mandating them to do is that when students do propose that they want or register for more than 18 credits, that'll be a determination that the student will make with their academic advisor. And the academic advisor will determine whether the student can handle that course load or can't. In terms of overall revenues through all of our campuses, the accelerated study fee generated a little less than $300,000 per year. So, it's not a big lift for each of our individual campuses in terms of revenue. Won't be a, you know, negative impact there. And we think that this is a better operational policy for our students, and, you know, that they have to go through their academic advisor to determine whether they can handle more than 18 or not.
Any question? Yes, Professor.
Yes. Is there going to be a cap at all? Because right now, if I remember correctly, there's a certain amount of fee if a student registers between 19 and 21 credits, and another amount, additional amount if the student registers for 22 through, I think, 25. But without a fee at all, does that mean a student can register for 49 credits?
There will be no cap. But as you said, currently, now that the fee rises, the more credits that you register for. So, there's no cap, other than if you want to take more than 18, you need to get the approval of your academic advisor.
Many colleges do not have academic advisors sufficient to meet the needs of the students. I mean, John Jay, for example, we have 15,000 students, and we have, I think, five academic advisors. So, there's no way a student is going, all the students are going to be... I mean, right now, I agree with the impulse. I agree that students should not be charged to take more credits. I do not think that students who have financial challenges should be disadvantaged in terms of how many credits they register for. But right now, the process does enable there to be an intervention with the student because someone now knows that the student is going to be taking more than, let's say, 21 credits. And if the student, let's say, has a 2.1 GPA, there's that conversation that takes place. Right now, if we pass this, as I understand it, and I may not understand it fully, there will not be any conversation.
No, no, the conversation has to take place. The student has to get someone from the academic department that they're in to sign off to say, "You are allowed to take more than 18 credits."
Is that in the resolution? I didn't see it.
It's not.
It's in the explanation of the...
That was rhetorical. It's not in the resolution. I'd like to see it added to the resolution.
It's not fiscal, it's academic.
We can add some language in that will firm up what the process is in terms of students getting the approval.
And while it's not a set of measure zero, it's pretty close to a set of measure zero. Somebody taking that 21 credits is...
But that's because there was a process, and there was a fee. Without that, you don't know.
Yeah, but it's inconceivable to me that the numbers can be so large that it would be a problem. I mean, I just cannot believe...
There's such an incentive to take as many credits as possible, which is...
21 credits?
Seven courses?
No, I agree, but I mean, in terms of the finances, the fewer, the more credits one takes a semester, the fewer semesters the student needs to go to get 120 credits. And it's...
Yeah. So, we'll put it in.
We'll put some governance level in there.
We'll put it in the resolution.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to move into the Subcommittee on Audit. Oh, no. You want to go with budget? Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Shiller.
Back to Matthew.
Just want a few minutes to provide an update on what's happening on the budget side. Since we last met, the city's executive budget was released. The mayor's proposal for fiscal 13 does provide us with, does comply with the maintenance of effort provision, which is a positive thing. Maintenance of effort calls for the city of New York to provide the same level of funds in any one year as they did in the previous year. And usually, that provision is meant at adoption. So, the fact that it's meant at the executive level, for the executive proposal, is encouraging because now we can spend our time in terms of lobbying efforts with the city council to talk about new initiatives and additional funding, rather than just working with the council to bring us up to their maintenance of effort. There were some items that were not included in the mayor's executive budget, and not surprising that these items were not in there because they're city council-funded items, things like the blackmail initiative, funding for centers and institutes, the city council-sponsored nursing program. These items were not in the mayor's executive proposal, but it is the expectation that the council will fund those items the way they have for the last several years. And so, discussions are going on with both sides of City Hall, both on the mayor's office, office of management and budget, and the city council, and the city council finance division. And we expect that an adopted budget will be in place within the next couple of weeks for fiscal 13. But again, just as we had on the state side a few months back, we do expect that the city budget is going to provide stability for next year. All of our tuition revenue for next year is recognized in the city's executive budget, and there are no new cuts proposed for the community colleges in next year's budget. So, so far, things look good, and we're hoping that the council will be as helpful as they have been over the last several years. The other item I wanted to mention on the budget side is that last week, we issued our fiscal 13 initial allocations to the senior colleges. We had an early state budget this year, and so we were able to issue the allocations earlier than we ever have. And the allocations include a significant compact investment plan for next year. The compact investment plan is $57 million at the senior colleges next year. $41 million of that is generated from the $300 tuition increase that we'll be doing this fall, and the dollars go back to the colleges, dollar for dollar, in terms of how much tuition is generated by each college goes back to that campus, dollar for dollar as part of the 57 million. There's also a $7 million component of the compact from the self-financed components for philanthropy, and $5 million from additional productivity and efficiencies. In addition, there's $1.5 million that'll be generated from enrollment increases at the senior colleges next year. That number is much smaller than we've had in previous compact plans, and that's a direct result of our enrollment growth starting to come down at the senior colleges over the last several years, and projected for next year as well. We have given the colleges for the compact plan for next year the most flexibility that we've ever given them. Past compact plans, the dollars were very prescribed in how they were used. We gave colleges targets for student services and full-time faculty and academic support and facilities and maintenance in all of the various categories of a campus's budgets. This year, the college is getting just a dollar amount, and they'll come back to tell us how they are going to spend it. We are giving the campuses a recommended minimum faculty hiring level because that is our most important goal. The compact plan includes a total of 230 additional faculty at the senior colleges. And again, that's a recommended minimum level. So, it could be that campuses will come in with more. If campuses come in with less, we'll have a conversation with that campus to try to understand, you know, why they're planning on less than the number that's been included in our allocation. One last item I want to add that's part of the allocation for next year, has been approved by the Board of Trustees, we have a $5 million student financial initiative for next year that we're using proceeds from the tuition dollars to fund this student financial aid initiative. $3 million of that will be at the senior colleges and $2 million at the community colleges. And we're doing three, we have three main targeted areas for that. One is providing straight scholarships and tuition waivers for students whose matriculation is at risk because of the tuition increase. Two is in the libraries, we're going to be purchasing books and making them available on loan in the libraries for students so that they won't have to purchase textbooks, they could take them on loan. And third is, we're going to be enhancing the federal work-study program and having our own institutional work-study program to give students, again, whose matriculation may be at risk due to the tuition increase, opportunities to work on the campus. And so, that's included in the allocation as well. Once the city budget is adopted, again, within the next week or two, then we'll be issuing the allocation to the community colleges, but a significant compact initiative similar to the senior colleges will be included in the community college allocation as well.
Okay. Any questions? Or not, excuse me, Matthew. Sorry. If there being none, I hand it over to Peter Pantaleo, Chairman of Subcommittee on Audit. There you go. Don't hit me with it.
Relatively short and simple. We have with us today our relationship partner, our head partner from KPMG. Prior to that, I just advised I need to move or request approval of the minutes of our March 6, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Same? Now, we have with us today Shelley Massey, partner at KPMG, our auditors, and Jessica Burns, a manager who I believe is rotating back onto the CUNY assignment. And they will explain the audit plan for the coming year.
That's good. Okay. I prepared a presentation. I'm just going to highlight certain pages in here, but I will begin on page three. Yes, Jessica Burns, she was the senior associate who was responsible for really running the day-to-day operations, and she is being promoted to manager, so she is joining the manager role and assisting on the CUNY engagement this year. Also, there is a new addition, again, a senior manager, John Eusenio, who is going to be assisting Erin as well. Erin is doing an internal rotation at the end of the summer to another KPMG office, so as she rotates off, John Eusenio is rotating on. Other than that, the team remains the same. And we're going to jump to page 14, which is the start of the audit plan. So, this page describes the scope of our work and all of the deliverables that we will be issuing for the fiscal 2012 audits. This is consistent with the past year's audits. We will issue a report on the financial statements of the university, as well as the financial statements of the senior colleges. And we also perform an A133 audit, which is an audit on the university's federal awards, which is principally student financial assistance. And we also do issue a management letter. Page 15 discusses some things on materiality. We have discussed this before. Materiality plays a role in the audit in determining what audit areas we focus on, and there is a slide in here that discusses the significant audit areas for those that we do consider to be material. Materiality also determines our audit procedures for those areas, and it also determines any audit adjustments. So, anything over a certain threshold that we find, those differences through the audit process, has been discussed with management. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica for the next few slides. She's going to go through the timetable for this year's audit.
Slide 16 provides an overview, like Shelley said, of the timeline and deliverables for the audit. So, today, we are presenting our audit plan, but also, today marks the beginning of our interim field work. interim field work, which is our college visits. We perform internal control test work as well as A-133 test work at all the colleges. We also will evaluate design and implementation of general IT controls. We have our ERM team who will do that work for us. At the end of August, we'll mark the beginning of our final field work. We will perform our substantive procedures and our detailed test work over the financial statements. We will form our audit conclusions and discuss key issues with management. In November 2012, we will issue our report on the financial statements and our senior college report. We also perform our required communications with the audit subcommittee. And then in December to February timeline, we will finalize our A-133 audit and issue the management letter and the A-133 report.
Jessica, just a point of clarification. You said all colleges on the A-133. Is that accurate or is it selected?
Yes. A selection of colleges for the internal control test work, but all colleges for the A-133.
Yeah, we need to, for the federal awards, cover a subset of the students from all the different colleges.
So on page 17, this slide summarizes the eight colleges we will visit as part of our internal control test work for the financial statement audit this year. For each of these colleges, we will update our processes and test controls at each of the colleges. And one of the main considerations here for how we select these is not only rotation requirements, but also feedback with central office management on changes in management at the colleges as well as any current year issues that we might want to look into.
Jessica had mentioned that we go through a process of walking through internal controls. On page 18, these are the areas that we are focused on. These are the same areas in the past. For schools that we are not visiting, we still do obtain a status of any prior year comments. So we do look to see how they have progressed with implementation of any prior year management letter comments. Page 19 and 20, but I'm really just going to highlight page 19. We do have auditing requirements to assess, assess the risk of fraud at any financial statement audit. So it doesn't matter if there's been no fraud noted in the past, we do have to consider the risk of fraud. And we do this internally through our engagement team by understanding where the risks are. We also speak with senior management to gain an understanding of their concerns for any areas of risk. And we do have procedures that we put in place throughout the audit, in the control stage, through the substantive phase, to identify any areas of concern and any test work that we need to do over any identified items. And if anything were to be identified, we would bring that back to your attention through our required communications. I'm going to skip to page 23 at this point. And 23 highlights, on the left-hand two columns, our significant audit areas and our significant estimates. This is where we spend the bulk of our audit effort. On the significant audit areas are those areas where the most significant transactions flow back and forth through the university. We generally test controls in these areas to gain an understanding that the controls that management has in place are operating as they had intended. The significant estimates, these are areas where there's management judgment. We generally do not test controls in this area and in certain of these, we do bring in some specialists to help us with the valuations. Both of these columns, the procedures, the detailed procedures that we cover are included in the audit plan that was previously provided in your materials. So I'm not going to go through those in detail. Any significant unusual transactions, we will need to look at as we go through the course of our audit. And Jessica had mentioned that we do involve information technology personnel and they are actually beginning their work now as well. On page 24, other than the specific procedures that we do perform over the actual financial statement numbers, there are a lot of other procedures that we do perform to gain a comfort that the financial statements are fairly presented and complete. We do review the financial statements. We have a second partner review that does review all of the disclosures and financial statements as well. We do involve a tax manager. While the university is obviously tax exempt, there are still some concerns for tax exempt entities that she does look into. We do review the minutes of board and committees to gain an understanding that any significant transactions are included properly in the financial statements. And we do send legal letters to in-house counsel to gain an understanding if there's any litigation or other commitments outstanding that should either be accrued for or disclosed in the financial statements. Page 25, just to highlight, there is one new accounting standard that is effective for CUNY this year that relates to the hedge accounting treatment for derivatives, essentially swaps. I do not expect this to have a significant impact on CUNY's financial statements this year, but just highlighting that there is one new item that we will need to consider. And on page 26, just to give you a sense of any future items, there are four new statements that are going to be applicable for 2013. And some of these will have very significant impacts on the financial statements of the university. So we are already beginning to talk with management about these and how they will impact CUNY.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman, do you have any? Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kaufman, do you have any?
No, we've, excuse me, we've had a preliminary meeting already with Shelley and with her team and well as with a number of people in the university that will be involved in the audit and we wanted to bring this to the committee just to give you an overview and to have approval for the audit plan.
I see as an action item, Mr. Chairman, approval of the 2012 audit plan?
Yep. We handed out with the materials for the meeting last week.
I move approve, sorry. No, it's back to you.
I will second it.
I move approval of the 2012 audit plan.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, comments?
Yep.
Statement number 621, that they will be consolidated in all of the various foundations and the colleges, but those aren't the units that you're discussing here?
Did you mention the foundations?
Yes.
This is revising more of the criteria. There are two different component units that we need to consider. The foundations are considered to be discrete. They're not actually combined in. This is more looking at the component units that are actually in a blended presentation. For example, RF CUNY. So RF CUNY is consolidated with CUNY's financial statements. This is going to focus more on that and what are the criteria stands for consolidation. I don't anticipate it impacting the foundations at all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Page 17. On page 17, you list eight colleges to be visited. How are they chosen?
I'm sorry.
On page 17, eight colleges identified. How are they identified? What's the technique?
We have a rotation policy that we've had in place where we touch each of the 19 campuses or the 20 colleges now at least once every three years. There is some overlap. Some colleges do get selected more frequently. We also look at where there has been management turnover or a significant amount of management letter, significant amount of management letter comments in the past. So it's a collective decision between us and management on who we're going to be visiting that year.
Who will manage it? Do you consult?
Barry and Miriam and Tom.
Usually with the control office.
Any further comments, questions? Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we move into the subcommittee on investments. Approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 2nd. I'll move them.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any questions, comments, changes? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have information items. Performance update first. Janet?
In the end of the time, we're going to incorporate a very brief discussion on performance in the asset allocation review. And I'll turn it over to Cambridge.
Yeah. You should all have a page that starts and looks like this. It's page two. There's small numbers here, page two. Which just shows what is now a little bit of old news, the first four months of the year, which were obviously pretty strong returns, the first three especially, and then April was still taking off. I wouldn't say it's old news because May clearly was a negative month for the portfolio but also for the markets, world markets in general. You were up, as you can see, 7.3% through the end of April. May, we have an estimate of about minus 4.7%. So you're still in positive territory, but clearly things, but clearly things turned around in May. The good news is that you captured quite a lot of the upswing, about 67% of the up market, whereas if we look at the total market, 12-month ended April 30th, the all-country world index was down 5.1% for that period and you captured only 18% of that. So there's more upside capture than downside capture, which is positive. We won't go much because the focus here is really on the asset allocation review, so we won't go much into the market. Suffice it to say that that part of the, what happened in May was clearly because of Europe. The situation in Europe that seemed to be somewhat alleviated at the beginning of the year came up again and the situation is very unclear right now, whether Greece will stay in, whether the euro will persist and all those kind of things are a bit up in the year right now. So we are cautious and looking at the markets and trying to figure out what we do, but it's important to know that what we are doing with the asset allocation is really not trying to address anything for the short term. It's really trying to look at the long-term good of the portfolio and so the recommendations you're seeing here today are really not to address the short-term issues here. If we go to page six. The thing about the asset allocation is that it's, as we said, long-term, but that doesn't mean that it's set in stone. We, as you know, we made some pretty radical changes to the asset allocation back in 2008 when you hired Cambridge and we did the whole overhaul. We have seen that play out over three years.
Excuse me, Mr. Mark. Joe, I think Cambridge wanted to go into executive session on the asset allocation review.
Okay. I'll entertain, I'll move a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Seconded. Can you all in favor? Aye. Executive session. Thank you.
So?
Hold on, please.
Okay, sorry.
I put forward a motion to change our target allocations as was described in the presentation given to us by Cambridge Associates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to return.
Second.
Second. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
How does the market do today?